This meeting of the School Board of Alachua County, Florida is called to order. Welcome to the September twenty first date for the meeting of this school board. I am asking each of you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Way down here.
Yes, Mrs. Russell.
I would like to request that on the consent agenda, item number seven be moved to the action. Agenda, please.
No second needed.
It doesn't require a second, just.
By Mrs. Russell, seconded by Mrs. Surtin.
No, no second, not in seconds.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Tina. Did you say you did second it?
No ma'am, we don't need a second, so.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the date of September seventh? Public hearing adoption of the final budget and millage.
So move, Madam Chair.
It has been moved by Mrs. Surtin and seconded by Dr. Paulson. Any discussion? Dr. Paulson. Speak into your mic, please.
That the minutes were incomplete. If you look on six eighteen, I, I, it wasn't an official vote, but we've had a vote of people yes or no. And it's, it's incomplete. We didn't have the, I, I handed in the letter from Broward County, because that was a very significant part of the, of the meeting. If you look at the meeting, while it's in the, in the minutes, people need to be able to talk to each other and work together. We are in a position with the mask mandate that is litigation. I believe in wearing masks, which I said, I believe in respecting positions even if I don't agree, whether we agree with people at the state level or not. But I also said that I thought we were in, the, the letter that Broward County had written, which I submitted to put in the minutes. And, because why I thought it was important, I think that was important that we put that in. I looked at the. Excuse me, why I get this? All right, this minutes superintendent shall cause in one, in one sixty-eight to, he kept minutes of all board members and showing the time and place, the members present, the subjects, consideration, summary and deliberation sufficient enough for the public to understand. This is not sufficient enough for the public to understand. It's, it's, it's very vague. And I think that we need to make it more inclusive, where people know that this was about a, a vote that another county took and that, I do agree that we should keep the lawsuit, but I don't think we should separate, we should, people need to know what I, what was said that night. So I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at. It's, what happened, I, I did this once before, eleven years ago. And I, lady was insulting to one of our other board members, and I put it on, on the minutes, and they said, you can't put that in. And I said, well, I think you can. And they went around, and after about three, four weeks, I said, they said, we can't put everything on the minutes. And I said, you don't have to. But when people vote, and even if it's not an official vote, Dr. McNeely, you ask each one of us how we stood. And the only one I think that didn't say yes or no was Mr. Hyatt. So I think that, to me, is sufficient enough to be a vote. And I think it's important that this was said. I agree that we are, I, I didn't, never said I was against us being in litigation, because I think we have to have a way to settle disputes. But I think we should have put this in. See, the one thing I disagree with is that, you know, when we say that this, that we, we don't have anything to hand in, it's, I don't think it's quite accurate. We do have kids that are not being able to attend class because they don't wear a mask and they don't get a doctor's note. I think if we said, we're not going to, uh, send something, and that'd be more accurate than saying there's not something to hand in, because there definitely is something to hand in. And that's the way, you know, the English language, it's important to, you know, use the English language correctly. Because you get in hearings and everything, people are gonna call you out if you, if you don't. So that's my reasoning. I think it's important that people know what I talked about that night. I didn't have to win, I mean, I thought this isn't a win, it's just the idea that I've done this before. I had the same problem getting it on the agenda. And I'm doing it again, and I think it should be on the agenda, because people need to know what was said that night and where, and it was said today. They have, they can go to the video. They're not gonna go to the video with this language that's in there right now. And I don't think it's right. I think, I feel like I'm being silenced. And I'm a public official. And I don't like to be silenced. I want to be polite about it, but I don't want to be silenced. And we need to talk about this. And it's, I'm trying to, if I get knocked down, I'll make sure everybody hears this again. This is important.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Paulson.
I'll yield to Mr. Delaney, and then I'll speak.
Dr. Simon, his light was on long ago. What would you need to say, Attorney Delaney?
If I'm understanding correctly, I think that Dr. Paulson's motion to amend the minutes would pertain to the approval of the regular school board meeting minutes, which is item number four on our agenda. And, and right now, we're at the special minutes pertaining to the adoption of the final budget and millage.
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay.
And I made a mistake, I'll be glad to talk again. Thank you.
I was gonna mention that as well. I do have points to make, so I don't know if you want to vote on the special meeting first, and then I'd like to address item number four that he is speaking.
Okay, all right. Um, Mrs. Surtin?
That was my comment as well, Dr. McNeely.
Okay. If there are no other comments for that particular minute, Attorney Delaney, is it all right for the call for the vote?
Yes ma'am, as long as everybody understands, I, I, following the agenda, we're on item number three, about the minutes for the adoption of the final budget and millage, at this point.
Yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular school board meeting, September seventh?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mrs. Surtin, seconded by Mr. Hyatt.
And then I want to make the amendment that I, I made last.
I can't hear you.
I want to make the same amendment, that we add the information that I handed in, that would be handed in tonight. It's one of the parts of the motion, is that we hand, we add the letter that Broward County sent to the state. And, and that we do it, because this is exactly what happened, and the language that we have in the, in the minutes right now is not accurate.
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
All right, it has been motion for an amendment to be made, Mr. Hyatt has seconded. Any further, Mrs. Surtin?
Yes, I'd like to add that normally the minutes that are kept by staff are not a, they don't dictate the minutes. I can recall coming before the board as a citizen, when I didn't feel that something that, that was dialogue, citizen input given, and then there was input by the elected board members at that time, and the minutes were not amended for a verbatim recording of what was said in the meeting. When I read the minutes that are in question that Dr. Paulson sent, I, I got the, the meaning from it. So I'm, I'm wondering if the policy says that they are summary. It does not have to be an exact wording of what was said in the meeting, else there would be voluminous. So I, I think staff have done a good job. So I don't, I don't, if the, the letter that Dr. Paulson wants to submit, I don't, I think that can be added, but I don't think the minutes need to be adjusted for that. And to, to include a verbatim speech, verbatim wording of what he said.
All right. I'm gonna call for the, oh, Dr. Simon.
Thank you. So I did have this request, and I did speak with the staff about this request. And I have looked at the policy, which Dr. Paulson is pointing out.
Mm-hmm.
And the policy does address that it is a summary of events of the, the board meetings. And based on what was written that Dr. Paulson wanted us to change to, and based on what he said, these are not the same things.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, we are not by policy required to transcribe the meetings. And I think it's something for the board to think very carefully, that if a board member would like to rewrite the meeting and change the minutes, I think that can be problematic in the future. And again, this aligns with what the policy says, so thank you.
Can I answer that, please?
Thank, thank you Superintendent Simon. Dr. Paulson, one more comment?
I'm not asking to transcribe and change the minutes. I'm saying that, I'll read it again, people need to be able to talk to each other and work together. We are in a position with the mask mandate. I believe in wearing masks. I believe in respecting position even if I don't agree with it, whether we agree with people at the state level or not. When they ask for something, I think we should adhere to it. I, one of the important things I said is that it, it says in, in the minutes that we should make it so people realize, know what they're looking for. Somebody goes looking for that meeting, is this very vague of what they're getting. I'm not asking for it. I'm telling you that I've done it before, when I was a member of this school board. And that, it's not, and I remember saying to the superintendent, because he said, we can't transcribe everything, just like Mrs. Surtin said. I said, you don't have to. But when something is, that's this important, and you just forget about it and not, and not put it in, then you're not putting, not letting people see what this is all about. This is about, again, it's about, it's all right if you don't want to send something. Plus, I, you know, I could say, you know, it, it's when we said, we don't have anything to, to send in, and that just isn't true. I mean, we would, but what we should say is, we're not gonna send it in. That, that would be an accurate statement. And that's what I want accuracy out of this, where people, just like the, just like the, the policy says, so people realize what they are, where, what this is about in the minutes. And they know where to look, and they can look in it, and they can look on the video, they have to. Nobody's gonna look at it right now with this vague sentence or two that we have. That's all. It's not the whole, all the minutes. It's just making sure people know what was talked about that night.
Uh, Attorney Delaney, may I have some help? We have an amendment here on, on the board.
Yes ma'am.
How can I proceed, please?
So, if we've finished discussing the proposed amendment, I think we've got a motion and a second on it.
We're done with the discussion.
So we've got a motion and a second on the amendment, we should have a vote on the amendment.
All right. We will have now a vote on the amendment made, that was seconded by Mrs. Surtin and put in motion by Mr. Hyatt. Starting with Mrs., starting with Mrs. Surtin, we'll take a roll call.
What's, what, the motion was what? I, I made the motion.
I do apologize, Dr. Paulson. I will take a roll call now. Mrs. Surtin, and coming down the dais.
There seems to be, are you still confused, Mr.?
He's done, he's through.
She just corrected it. Dr. McNeely corrected.
And, and she, okay, just correct.
She, she just corrected that you made the motion, and, and Mr. Hyatt seconded the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr.
I vote no.
Okay. Dr. Paulson?
We're voting no, we're on the amendment now, is what.
All right, sure. This is on the amendment. Dr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
And I'm no. All right, so the motion passes three, two.
Now we vote on them.
Yes.
On the amended minutes.
Yes, go right ahead.
So now you would need to call.
I can't hear you.
Now you would need to call for a vote on the adopting of the minutes as amended.
Okay, as amended. Mrs. Surtin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
No. The vote passes three, two. Thank you so much. And now we're moving on to the approval of the regular school board minutes. I hope I haven't done this already, September the eighth, all right?
So move, Madam Chair.
May I have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you so much. Before we move forward to board member and superintendent announcements, I just want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of City Commissioners for extending their chambers to us while we were in the process of renovation. We thank you so very much for your welcome spirit in both chambers. We appreciate you more than you know. And if you should ever need to come to our chambers, please know that you are totally welcome. Mrs. Surtin?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McNeely. I'm gonna say, I want to thank also the Board of County Commissioners for their welcome. And I'd also like to extend to them a hearty thank you again for funding the renovations, so to speak, of our boardroom here. They, I called them and asked them to share their CARESAC money with us, to help us upgrade our audiovisual equipment here in the boardroom. Part of that equipment, I'm sorry, the CARESAC funding could be used to make public meetings more accessible to the public during the COVID shutdown. And so many folks are aware that our equipment in here, I was told by county commission staff that it couldn't be upgraded, that it was too old and antiquated. So they were generous enough, they all, the former board agreed five oh to allot the money to us and to share that for us. So we're back here now, and I'm really appreciative, as Dr. McNeely said, for them extending and letting us use their facility while we were away. I thank Chair Cornell and his staff for making us feel welcome and, and helping us to, to get to where we are today, and so we're here. With this, we're still in COVID now, we're kind of trying to come out of that. As an announcement, I'd like to make, and many may have already heard it, where the district has been sponsoring vaccination clinics on school campuses. And we're having one this Sat, Sunday on September twenty-sixth, from twelve noon to four P.M. At the corner of Northeast Twenty-third Avenue and Fifteenth Street. It's a COVID vaccine clinic with the intent of trying to get our student population, more of our student population, as well as the community vaccinated, to get that rate up. And so we've worked with Shands, UF Health, and the Health Street Organization, the Health Bus, to put this clinic on. And we're hoping that any of our students who have not gotten vaccinated at the school or already vaccinated, their parents or community members, that they will come out to that clinic on Sunday from twelve to floor, four, which is at the corner of Northeast Twenty-third Avenue and Fifteenth Street, which is the Passage Family Church Oak Trees Complex there. It's right across from Smokey Bear Park. So that's from twelve to four. And the Health Department is offering the twenty-five dollar gift certificate for folks who come and get their first or second shot, or even the booster if they so desire. That is the only announcement that I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Surtin. I forgot to mention to our staff, all of the folk that had anything to do with this renovation, you are superb. Thank you so very much. I've spoken, I'm, thank you, Mrs. Surtin. I've spoken to Mrs. Peck and Mrs. Green. We learned a lot by being in the other chambers. I'm looking forward to beautiful blue chairs and footrests up under the dais. So I have put that in motion as chair. I'm expecting those things soon, very soon. Thank you Superintendent Simon, I know you're nodding in agreement. Thank you so much. And now we will have, yes ma'am, we will have other announcements.
Thank you, Board Chair.
Dr. Simon?
Thank you. So I have a few announcements. First, I'd like to announce that today we finished our second round of on-campus vaccine clinics for our students twelve and older. We have had thirty-two vaccine, vaccine clinics in our schools so far this year. We also launched our Beyond the Bell, which launched last week, and this is our free virtual support system that is available after school for students. It is synchronous, so they can get assistance. We're very proud of this. It's something that Ginny Wise has led, and I don't, oh, there she is. She's worked very hard in essentially creating something that hasn't existed before. And I think that not only do we see this as a great launch of an initiative, but we see opportunities to expand this as well. So we're very happy about this. We also have started our Hello Week, which is associated with the Sandy Hook Promise. And this is a program that teaches students to be more socially inclusive and connect with each other. Additionally, today, we delivered our air purifiers. The district purchased seventeen hundred Era Max Pro Four air purifying units, and we plan to install these in every classroom. The air will be circulated three to five times per hour, and it removes ninety-nine point nine seven percent of airborne particles. And lastly, we are in the process right now of training all of our principals and teachers on our new progress monitoring platform, which is called Illuminate. This will align with many of the, the progress monitoring efforts, efforts that Governor DeSantis is proposing with the FSA passing out of usage. And so we're excited about this. I think the teachers are really finding this to be quite useful, and our principal leaders, of course, are very pleased to see a system that can help them monitor the progress of our students more effectively. Thank you.
Any other board members? Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think the, the chair has sort of taken over some of what I think a lot of us would say, but it thought, if she thanked our staff for everyone responsible for getting this But thought, if she thanked our staff for everyone responsible for getting this room ready. And amen to that. But I also want to thank our staff, many of the same folks, who went on the road, who took the show on the road, and were at the county commission and the city, at City Hall, and, and were able to make things work there. So thanks to all of those folks. I also want to thank our, our young artists from Lofton and from GHS, that, that we have this lovely art in, in our room, in this room. One of the things that, that I've missed, and I hopefully we've missed, is seeing the artwork of our students here at our home. So I, and I'm, I wish I had looked up the names of the teachers, but I didn't. So thank you to those teachers, and I'll try to look those up. And, and finally, as was mentioned by the superintendent, you never know what you're going to hear on the news. And to hear the demise of FSA, and that's not a done deal yet because the legislature has to make that happen. But the governor has announced this. And I, I think those of us who are particularly are teachers, but, but it's also those of us who have been parents and students and have gone through this basically since the early 2000s. And, and my deal has always been, any testing should be for prescriptive, not punitive purposes. And, and this, I think, I, is, why it happened, I don't know. But I do thank the governor for this. And I encourage everyone who is concerned about, about this to make sure that our, your legislators know this is a priority for you. So, and I, I think this is very much a bipartisan issue, where we can all agree, we all, always need issues that we can all agree on. And unless you own stock in a testing company, I think you can agree on this one. So anyway, thanks to the governor for that. And, and I hope, hopefully we can move on and for the best for our children and teachers in this new post-FSA time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Russell?
I have a comment of a little different nature, although I agree with all the thanks. And I also agree with the progressive evaluations because not every child is a good test taker. But I, I have been thinking about the mother who came to our last meeting and told us about her incident with her child and the bus driver driving the wrong way in traffic and how dangerous that was. And I am wondering if anybody followed up with her or followed up on this incident, she gave us the bus number. I would hate to think that, that she would get the impression that we don't care that that happened to her. And I'm just wondering, what is the, is there a procedure for following up on parents' concerns like this when they bring us their concerns?
Our staff always has made notation of whatever. And the superintendent and the designated Donna Jones, the deputy superintendent, Mrs. Wise, they will all rally about what needs to take place based on the last meeting. And I am almost can say 100% that situation was taken care of.
Okay, good, thank you.
May I speak to this, Dr. McNeely?
Excuse me?
Over here?
Yes.
So, Ms. Russell, actually, at that meeting, our chief of operations, Shan, Shane Andrews, actually followed the woman who came and spoke with her and made a connection. My understanding is also our director of transportation has been working on this with her. And so there has definitely been a, everyone has been taking care of this and addressing it.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell.
And speaking with the staff members.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we are going to move into our citizen input. And let me share with all of the citizens. We have two different comments tonight. And we are going to leave the consent over until we get to consent. So the citizens that will be coming to the dais now will be speaking based on information that you want to give, but it has nothing to do with consent. So I want the citizens to understand that we will provide you, this first portion, 15 minutes, will be provided for you to address the board prior to our regular business meeting. And we are asking that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. And our first citizen is Suzanne. And when you come forward, please give your first and last name.
Suzanne Kay. Just under two, just under a year ago, two of you hired Dr. Simon temporarily, then swiftly appointed her with what was and still is an illegal majority vote. But the other two of you that are still in this room did not support that hire. And I hope you stick to your gut and listen to that angel on your shoulder that says that was wrong, that hire was wrong, and it still is wrong. Per board policy.
Excuse me?
10.20, 01 pertaining to the superintendent's contract, you all can fire her at any time if you, if you meet the obligations of her payout. But guess what? Tonight is your lucky night! It is! Because good and just causes. And you won't need to pay out her contract. You have been provided documents that will prove you have this just cause. Per current, her contract, Section 10.3 of her signed contract, she is in violation. You now have verified proof from the Florida Department of Education and the Olatchua County School Board that Dr. Carly Marie Poston, ESQ Simon, does not have any active applications or current valid certifications, which is the employee's responsibility in order to hold the position of superintendent in this district and the state of Florida. In fact, Carly Marie ESQ Poston Simon has not had any valid certifications in the state of Florida or Ohio since 2013! Does anybody know what year it is? 2013. She is, because I'm yelling, get over it. Does anybody know what year it is? Stop being played as fools. I know some of you are smarter than this juvenile delinquent and the clowns that are still left on this board that put you in this predicament. This is noncompliance. This is breach of contract. So I ask you now, are you going to allow a nonqualified person who has not met their contractual obligations for over 10 months to continue to work? Because they're busy! No, you are not! We, the people of Olatchua County, with over 2,700 signatures, demand a qualified interim hire effective immediately. And that we have a proper, proper, proper bid firm hired to conduct a national search that will include citizen involvement and input to take place in order to hire a brand new superintendent. Call the vote!
The next person is?
Excuse me, Dr. McNeely?
Next person is Lauren.
Dr. McNeely, may I say something for a moment, please?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
I would appreciate if we could.
I, I, I can't.
I understand, it's hard to see with the mask. So, we, so before she leaves, she should understand that there is no certification requirement to be a superintendent in the state of Florida. On top of that, we have a civility pledge, and I would like us to make sure that people are following that. Please.
I am so sorry, I was distracted. Would you repeat what you said, Dr. Simon?
So the state of Florida is one of the states that does not have a certification requirement for a superintendent. That is in the law. There are many superintendents who have never even been educators. So I am fully qualified to serve as superintendent. I also have a doctorate in education, leadership, and policy. I have a background in school finance and school law. You are welcome to look at my CV. Before I took this position, I was seeking my second doctorate in urban leadership or urban planning. And just so you know, we do have a civility pledge. We are asking you to not call names. It's not acceptable, it's not kind, and it's not how we run a government entity and a board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Suzanne, just a minute. That was Suzanne. Lauren, Lauren?
Yes.
Before you begin, make, I want to make sure you understood what was just stated.
Correct, I do understand the English language.
Would you speak up, please?
Correct, I do understand the, the English language, I did understand this, thank you.
Okay, so you will not be calling any names. And Deputy, I'm hoping that you'll help me out here. Please begin, Lauren.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Lauren, I'm a licensed community mental health provider. And I've, and I'm also an invited member of the Olatchua County School Health Advisory Council. I appreciate that invitation to participate on the council since the summer in terms of mental health provision on that council. I'm here to discuss my concern that children's best interests within this district are being hindered by this leadership of superintendent and school board. Fear has been the central message of the superintendent and board related to this pandemic. Fear and coercion, using fear and coercion to control have clinical terms. Blatant and continued disregard for parents' rights and abilities to make decisions for their own children have additionally eroded trust from this community and from parents of the children you are here to serve. Not to mention employees who have spoken out that they are being coerced and feel pressured to make decisions that they do not want to make. Dr. Si, Superintendent and several board members have repeatedly said they intend to serve all students. Yet you clearly don't mean all. What about the students whose parents have brought forth their concerns about their child wearing a mask all day or other medical decisions? No matter the specific reason. Does all not apply here? Undermining and attacking medical providers in this community is also wrong. And it erodes trust and partnership. This superintendent and school board have again and again, by way of neglecting to address issues raised, told parents essentially they are incompetent and they can't be trusted to make decisions for their own children. Telling the community and parents that they are not good enough or competent enough to make decisions for their children will not allow for this partnership that I keep hearing about and wanting to partner with parents in the community. You have obliterated that trust and potential for partnership. You cannot be an effective leader of a school district without the trust and buy-in of parents and the community. I support the immediate replacement of this superintendent and all board members who have voted or continue to vote to disregard parents and state laws and orders.
Tina Days? And would you please give, even though I may say your name, Mrs. Days, would you give your full name?
My name is Tina Days. And I'm just so upset about how these so-called parents is acting in front of this meeting. It's outrageous. First of all, you don't have to yell to get your point across. And I stand for Superintendent Simon because these parents are not speaking for all parents. I don't know what parents they're speaking for, they're not speaking for me. I support you 100%. And I have always supported you because I know you have the best interest of all the kids. Because as a matter of fact, the reason why I know that, if anyone look on Facebook or anything, our rates are going down from COVID. And why that? It's because of your leadership, a mandated mask. Your freedom don't override my freedom of my kid getting COVID because your kid don't want to wear a mask. Stay home, do e-school. And I specifically am in a, upset because I have a kid that goes to Bishop, and I have a child that goes to Lincoln, they're both in the matinee program, and Bishop is overcrowded. My daughter says every time she goes to the hall, they're bumping against each other. Imagine if there was no mask mandate. She is not vaccinated because she's 11 years old. So I thank God for your leadership, Superintendent Simon. You are hearing from parents that are sick and scared of their kids getting COVID. Now, some of these people want to be all about the masks. Ask them if they're going to get the vaccine. Because they, they don't want to get the vaccine, they don't want to wear a mask. Then what do they want to do? Spread COVID. Your rights don't override a spreading COVID. I have a baby at home, and, and as a matter of fact, COVID has hit daycares. I had to test my five-month-old because the nine-month-old had COVID. From where? His parents. They passed it to him, and my baby was next to him. So not only do I have to worry about kids in school getting COVID, it's passing through daycare. Now, you tell me how I can protect my baby from getting COVID. I'm doing all I can as a single parent by sending my kids to school with masks. So I support you 100% with the mask. And if y'all have to stand up, the governor said to stand up. He's not supporting the kids. We have kids dying in a hospital. Why? Because they are not a bone block. So he don't care. Now, ask his, ask his kids, do they go to private school? Do they mandate masks? I'm sure, I'm sure they made that mask at the private school. I'm sure they, he got vaccine along with his family. But he don't want to curse nobody else. Is his children placed above my kids? No. So keep the mask mandate as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Days. Jane Ratchard, maybe?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Jana Reichardt, and I am here with two of my coworkers. We represent Transportation Department. I have in my hand a petition because we are aware that you guys are in the second round of interviews for a director. And we want Mr. Spears back. I have 89 signatures out of a little over 100 employees in transportation, mine included, that are asking you to go get our director back. He's who we should have had in the first place, instead of that little bald-headed man last time. Don't smack me. Because he really messed the place up. We love the director we have now, and unfortunately, he is leaving us, which is a shame because I really do think that, that he could have the potential to do some great things. But we are asking you guys, please, 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 reach out to Mr. Spears. Because that is who we would like to see in that seat. That is who we would like to work with. He already has to be, he already has the knowledge. He already knows what he's walking into. Please reinstate him. Please, you don't even need to interview him, he already knows what it is. All you got to do is ask him to come back really nicely. Really, really nicely. I don't know if my, may she? Use some of my minutes?
If you're going to speak, please give us your full name.
Hi, I'm Patricia Palmer. I work in transportation, and I'm a union representative. I'm just here to support my coworkers and everyone that signed the petition. I'm currently on maternity leave. So I'm begging you all, can we please have him back? Or we're taking into consideration because it's bad. We're going to keep going through this process. Everybody's going to keep leaving us. And we need someone that's going to stick around and get our department together. With the people willing to help him, that people actually like him and care for him. And also, I was, I felt out of form to speak. I want to say I support the decision of the mask mandate. I just had a baby less than two months ago, I just- I just had a baby less than two months ago, I just sent my kids back to school, Lincoln and my three-year-old back to daycare and I was a week out of the hospital and my three-year-old caught COVID because parents did not want their kids wearing masks and they were in the daycare with COVID. So, and Lincoln, I get texts and emails from Lincoln every day with new cases. And we do need these masks, it is not safe. You know, I can understand if a child has a medical disability or something, they can't wear a mask. But if that's not the case, they need to wear masks. I have family members that have died, I have people that's close to me have died, vaccinated and unvaccinated from COVID. And if you're going to speak for all, I think that's the best decision. I'd like to thank you all for keeping the mask, and that's it.
Ms. McNeely, thank you for letting us speak. And who should I hand this to?
You can bring it up to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This ends our citizen input for now. We will pick back up once we get through with our business agenda. Thank you to all of the citizens that spoke earlier. Dr. Simon, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to recommend that the school board approve consent agenda as described in items two through 15.
With the exception of seven dropped down, so...
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mrs. Surtin and seconded by Mr. Hyatt in a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And our next presenter is already there, Mr. Rela, good evening.
Thank you, Chairman McNeely, board members, Superintendent Simon. This item is the renewal of the health, life and other cafeteria insurances for the 2022 plan year, which starts in January. The insurance committee, as an annual process, of course, reviews all of our claims, data, looks at contracts, et cetera. Based on that information, they are...
Mr. Rela, I am so sorry, I am so sorry. When we did consent, I had citizens who needed to speak to the consent. I do apologize. Attorney Delaney, may I go back?
Yes, ma'am.
I truly am sorry. James Burdette.
Hi, my name is James Burdette. It's time to discuss replacing our superintendent, regardless of the fact that she tried to obfuscate...
Just a minute, I didn't know, I didn't know that you were going to speak to the superintendent's position. We spoke earlier, we hope that you will adhere to that and stop your comments right now.
Madam Chair, if the consent, I don't know anything, the consent agenda items, if Mr. Burdette has one of those items he's speaking to, we let him speak, but that, what he just started on is not a consent agenda item, so Mr. Burdette, I guess that's...
That is why I said we are not going to go there. And so unless you are going to change your demeanor, your comments, we cannot accept them tonight. I can't hear you, Dr. Paulson. If you have something else that you need to say, so be it. But as far as the superintendent and the civility piece, no. Do you understand?
Oh, I understand, I'm just...
That's all I need, that's, no, 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 no.
The comments need to be put.
All I need you to say is you understand.
The second citizen input is where he would make that.
Next input, next citizen.
What, is there, is there another part of this meeting where I...
De Basio, are you in the auditorium? Seeing, seeing... De Basio, yes. Ms. Basio, is it pertaining to the superintendent's position? Before you begin.
What do you, what do you need from me, ma'am?
I'm so sorry, I, would you speak up, please?
My name is De Basio. I have four children who are mixed race. At home, we do not teach them to be victims. We teach them and guide them to be a success. I find it appalling that the superintendent would try to push a CRT agenda through without any input from or discussion with any parents, especially those with children who are allegedly affected by racism prejudice. There is no need for this in a school curriculum, as ordered by our governor Ron DeSantis a few months ago. Carly Simon pushing an illegal agenda certainly shows that she is not fit to be the superintendent of the Elatro County Schools and should be replaced immediately.
Item number two.
And you have the power to do that. We're counting on you. Nobody's listening. Nobody's listening. You're not listening, you're...
Well, for one, she's speaking on action item number two, if it's the master in-service plan, that's not a consent agenda item, that was moved to action item number two.
Ma'am, I signed up and I was told I was speaking on item number two and I was, I was called in.
Initially, initially, and then we changed the agenda, so...
Would I, would I would suggest, Dr. McNeely?
No, actually, if you don't mind, ma'am, I would like to start over because you were not listening to me.
So, okay, so if they're wanting on the consent agenda to speak to the master and service plan, that master and service plan item has been moved to the action plan. So there is nothing to speak of based on the emails on the consent agenda. When item, action item number two comes up is when the discussion would occur. Because that's, my expectation is that you're talking about CRT that was sent in emails on the master and service plan, am I correct?
Yes.
That's now action number two, because originally it was on the consent agenda, but Ms. Russell has asked for it to be pulled off. So this is just a confusion. If you let us get through this and we have Mr. Rela do his action item number one, then you'll be welcome to speak for action item number two.
Yes.
Okay. My pleasure.
Does Ms. Jackie Johnson have this all? Because she's calling us, on us to come and speak.
I think the complication is, is that Ms. Jackson is outside and so the amendment to the agenda was perhaps something that she didn't catch. So if you turn in your paperwork, especially prior to the amendment of the agenda, then she wouldn't have that. So minor confusion.
Then the simple question is, what agenda item do we address, what we want to address? Action item two?
Action item two will take care of what you would like to talk about. You're welcome.
Bummer.
Thank you, Chairman McNeely, board members, Superintendent Simon. This agenda item is the approval, or I should say renewal, of the health, life and cafeteria 125 plans for the 2022 plan year, which is in January of 2022. As an annual process, the insurance committee reviews all of our cafeteria offerings, also the health insurance renewal based on the claims trend we're seeing. And the insurance committee is recommending a 2% increase to the health insurance premiums for next year. Also want to remind our employees, we do have the open enrollment period coming up in a couple weeks. It's from October 1st through 25th. It's a change-only enrollment, so if you're happy with your benefits, you need to do nothing. But if you would like to get in and look at some of the offerings we have, certainly that's your opportunity to do so. We have several health fairs and open enrollment sites, there's about 15 of them, obviously, and I can read those. But employees certainly encourage them to go to our website and take advantage of some of those opportunities. The superintendent recommends the board approve the health, life insurance and cafeteria plans for the 2022 plan year as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Thank you, Mr. Rela, for presentation of this information. I noticed a slight increase in the health insurance benefits and I just really want to take this time to just say right now that it is really important that as a community, this, we see other agencies that are facing the same thing, that our employees and the general public know that as part of us trying to provide a safe working, learning environment, this feeds into and it's tied directly to our health insurance costs. The school board of Elatro County, the city of Gainesville, Elatro County Board of County Commission, but for our organization, we're all, we're self-insured, meaning that any claim, health insurance claims that our employees incur, the district pays for those. It's not paid, Blue Cross and Blue Shield is our administrator, but we have to pay for that. So that's important now during this time of this pandemic that we really are doing the things that we can do to control the spread of COVID. Because can you imagine if we have one employee who is ill for, I mean severely ill? I'm thinking now back to the employee, the nurse who was at North Florida who was on the ECMO machine for like six or eight weeks in the hospital. I mean probably millions of dollars of insurance benefits, insurance claims. And that is something that the district would have to pay out of pocket to cover those claims. So it's something that we're, I take very seriously, our physical health and well-being because it does correlate into a financial cost savings in the long run to the district. And when we save money in one way, that's money that we can use to impact students as well as paying our employees and things of that nature. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Paulson.
That's, that's about right, yes.
Excellent job. I mean, our insurance committee is excellent. It's, I just, you're right, Ms. Surtin, they do a great job and we do have a maximum out-of-pocket too that kicks in, right, Mr. Rela?
Right, there's obviously a lot of planned detail within here, but there is an out-of-pocket max. I will say we have seen pretty significant trend in claims associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. Fortunately, as Board Member Surtin mentioned, we have the ability through Blue Cross, Blue Shield, who administers the plan, to kind of really drill down on that. So we do have information, I talked with Dr. Simon last week about it, but we'd be happy to provide that information. Because it is, I mean, it's significant in terms of what we're, what the claims trend we're seeing. A lot of that's being driven unfortunately by COVID-19.
That's great, I just, I just brought it up after Ms. Surtin brought it up just to make sure people know the excellent job you're doing. That's all.
Mr. Burdette, would you come back to the dais? And if you're speaking about the master service agenda item, you are free to speak.
Dr. McNeely.
Miss Callan, health insurance.
Just a minute, I, Mrs., Mrs. Johnson said to call on these people.
Yeah, when he's done.
Okay, all right.
So I was done with my piece, I think we need a vote at this point.
I didn't think we were going to do the vote, I thought we were going to listen to the citizens.
This is action item one.
Okay, all right, so are we talking action item two?
No, one. We're voting on one.
But action item two?
We got to vote first.
Citizens to come back to speak. Thank you, Mrs. Surtin. Mr. Rela, at this point, we will now look at all in, moving for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Sorry about that, Mr. Rela.
So, Dr. McNeely, now we're at action item two.
Action item two.
I think we need a recommendation from the superintendent. See if we get a motion in a second and then we can have citizen input in the board discussion and a vote.
So Chairman McNeely, I would like to recommend that the board approve action item number two, the district master and service plan.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Surtin in a discussion. Mr., Dr. Paulson.
I have a problem with this getting, it's 361 pages. I'd like to table it and so I can have people, I want to have people, I've had a lot of phone calls besides this and I also didn't read the 361 pages. So I, I would like to table it, table it to a specific time, it'll be next meeting. And that way, people that have input, they want to call me, call me and I can learn about what I'm voting on. Right now, I don't know what the heck I'm voting on.
Dr. Paulson, Dr. Simon wants to speak.
So, so I understand that it is a long document. I also understand that this document has been on the consent agenda for the last decade or two. In fact, if you take this document and you cross compare it with the Adobe Acrobat tool, if you'd like, it's the identical document from 2017 when Sandy Hollinger was superintendent. It is also the same document that we had when Karen Clark was superintendent. So it is the exact same document that has gone across because this professional development is similar professional development that we have of educators that have been going on long before me. I know that people think that I have influenced this, but this is not my influence. If you cross the 2017 version with the current version, the titles of the in-services match, the descriptions of the in-services match. This is what has been going on for years. Because honestly, in the world of education, we talk about inclusion, equity and diversity often. So you will find this information in there. So I did not alter this. Jaqueta Rol, who is the director of professional development, has also not made the alterations. We've continued the professional development that we have done for years. So this is the exact same thing, Dr. Paulson, that you voted on last September and it would be the same one that you voted on the year before and the year before and so forth. Thank you.
Oh, well, Dr., go ahead, Dr., I'll let you get Dr. Paulson first, go ahead.
I hear what you're saying, I just, if I, I just see 361 pages and I hear a lot stir. And if I'd let this go in the past... in the past, shame on me, but I'm not going to let it go again. I'm going to find out about it, if I get that chance.
Thank you, Dr. Paulson. I'm, I'm new to the board, so to speak. I'm towards the end of my, my first term here, and I confirm what Dr. Simon just said. I did agenda review last, for in your absence last week, Dr. McNeely, and I got my packet last week from staff, and I reviewed it. So I kind of, I know I kind of like get on staff nerves sometimes because I go through all the, I go through all the documents, I mean, and look at them. So I don't, it's not new, and I, the document's not new. We did have it to review it, and I will say, I can, I can go with what Dr. Simon said. I went back and I looked at what had been presented to us in prior years, and there's not much difference to it. Matter of fact, I had a couple of questions or some things that I asked about, that I thought needed to be updated. So this isn't policy, just kind of like because of the emails that we received. If this was policy that was trying to be made, there'd be two meetings and a public hearing if it was policy. But to, this is not policy. This is a report. I, I wanted to confirm, and I called and spoke with Ms. Wise. This is a report that has to go to the state of Florida Department of Education, has not been changed, and since I am a person of color, I take great offense to people saying that they don't want to use certain words when they're teaching people, other people, children. And it's very easy to do Ctrl F and to look at a document and to pick out words and to not look at them in context, but being where I am and where I sit, I know what is the buzzword now that's being used is not what's being taught in this district. About almost two years ago now, the district undertook what it calls pursuing exemplary status as it pertains to teaching African American history and the Holocaust, which is a state law and has been a law for almost 25 years, but districts up and down the state of Florida have not complied and infused African American history in the teaching of K through 12. And so now there's this program where you can get an award or get special recognition if you infuse the teaching of African American history to our youth in K-12. I thought, oh lovely, that's what we're going to do. And that was, that was undertaken under the previous superintendent. And under the previous superintendent, Dr. Goggins from, what's the school in D-land? Stetson University came up, did several in-service trainings here. We've partnered with the University of Florida for access to information. So for me, I, when I got the emails and I saw, I was getting the impression that folks don't want things taught about people that are non-Eurocentric. And that's, I find that very concerning because America is said to be a melting pot, and there are some parts of history that people don't like and they want to whitewash, and I think that's unfair to people of color, because there are many great things that were done, and there were also some not so great things that were done. So for me, I'm not for tabling this. This is a, a report, this is a document we have submitted with revisions over the years. I don't know now, yes, 300 pages, but we got this information. It was posted on the website a week ago, and we had our binders put together by staff. All of, they copied all of this and gave it to us, and I think it's incumbent upon us to review it. So I don't think there's a need really, it wasn't that it was withheld, that we all had, our, our binders were, were given, and I think we move forward with it. We listen to our citizens and what they have to say, but as Dr. Simon has already said, this is something that was, has been in place and is being reviewed and updated, but it's been submitted probably the past 10 years. And it's, it's just kind of odd now that everything is just kind of peaked up and we're wanting to pick apart things, but to deny the inclusivity, to teach diversity and equity, just to, to, to pick apart a document based on certain words that are being used is, I think it's very petty. I think it's unfair, and I think it's uneducated. That those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Dr. McNeely.
At this point, we would like to, Mrs. Russell, and then after Mrs. Russell, we'll have our citizen, Mrs. Russell.
Okay. The, the binder with all of this information, it was, it was huge, and I reviewed it too. Some pages longer than other pages, but there were, if, it would have been helpful if perhaps there had been mementos, notes, saying this is the same thing that we've had for years and decades or whatever. That would have been helpful to know. Any information about how current things are or whatever would be helpful to us when we sit down, you know, and it was the weekend too, when we had activities planned, and it, it takes a long time to really go through and digest this material. So I think it would be helpful if we could either get the material earlier than we normally do, or have some additional information that would help us perhaps understand this is nothing new, or whatever. Whatever would be helpful to us in understanding when we go through this information, that it, it's just the same. I, I didn't know that until yesterday when I talked to Dr. Simon, so of course, I'm new too, it's the first time I've gone through this, so, you know, it, but it would be helpful if we get this much information to get it a little bit earlier, so we have more time to go through it, to go through it thoroughly and see what it's about. Thank you.
Going to go back to Mr. Burdette. And Mr. Burdette, I'm asking, are you going to speak to what issue before you even begin?
I've been told that what I'm speaking to is action item number two regarding the contract of Dr. Simon.
That is not an action item number two. Action item number two is the master in service plan, not my contract.
Action item number two is the master in service plan, not Dr. Simon's contract. That's not, that's just general citizen input.
We will put it down at the end of our business meeting for citizen input. Thank you.
Okay. Can I just briefly address this specifically?
You will certainly be heard again.
Can I briefly address this specifically? This issue?
Master in service.
Apart from anything to do with Dr. Simon?
Yes, the master in service.
The master in service.
Yes.
Yes.
So, my name is James Burdette, and I understand Dr. Paulson's, I, issue, and, and honestly, trust me, bro, isn't a good reason. It doesn't matter if any of it was previously approved or identical. It, it could mean that the previous boards were not paying attention, but with something that big, trust me, bro, just ain't going to cut it. You need to go through it, you need to look at it, you need to review it, and you need to decide if that's what you really want. And in the spirit of diversity and inclusion and working together and peace, I'm reminded of my pastor in the last few sermons that he's had, talking about envy and bitterness, and making sure that we're not letting that influence the spirit that we're addressing things, even if it's on behalf of somebody else, and even if there's been great wrongs in the past, which there have been. But a lot of the things that, the buzzwords that are being used today, CRT is not a thing. It's a state of mind. It's not a curriculum. And so we need to go through and look at what is being taught, and address that, and verify if that's what we really want our teachers to be thinking of when they're presenting curriculum to our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Fasso, I'm calling you back.
Thank you for letting me speak again. Is everybody listening this time, paying attention? Okay, thank you. I have four children who are mixed race. At home, we do not teach them to be victims. We teach them and guide them to be a success. I find it appalling that the superintendent would try to push a CRT agenda through without any input from or discussion with any parents, especially those with children who are allegedly affected by racism and prejudice. There's no need for this in a school curriculum, as ordered by our governor Ron DeSantis a few months ago. And Carly Simon pushing illegal agenda certainly shows that she is not fit to be the superintendent of the Elachua County Schools and should be replaced immediately. Yes, ma'am?
I ask you one more time that you will not say the name.
Okay, yeah, I'm finished.
The next person is Dr. Rockwell.
Good evening, Board Members, Chair McNeely, Superintendent Simon. My name is Dr. Sarah Rockwell. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My PhD is in Special Education with a Focus on Autism, so I'm here to just present some ideas and suggestions for ESE professional development plans, particularly around autism. First, and I know that you are presenting just a general plan, so these are just some suggestions that you might be able to consider putting into the details of individual in services. I'm not against the plan as it stands. I want to emphasize the importance of including autistic adults in planning trainings about autism, and point out that the autistic community prefers identity-first language, so autistic adults, not adults with autism. I think it would be ideal to set up an ESE advisory committee that includes adults with various disabilities on it, so that they can help provide input about what should be in these trainings. You could also look into established trainings provided by autistic-led organizations such as Autistic Self Advocacy Network. There's also, if you have specific trainers, Penn State is offering a free three-day training in October that will have presenters who are autistic advocates, and so if you have trainers who will be training your teachers, that might be an ideal thing for them to do. I'd also like to emphasize the importance of using a holistic and child-centered approach to managing student behavior rather than just ABA. A recent meta, a recent meta-analysis by the Department of Defense, looking at whether it was a good expense to use TRICARE money to pay for ABA, found that ABA is not, does not produce a statistically significant effect, so it's not working. In addition, a 2018 study showed a correlation between ABA therapy and increased incidence of PTSD in people who are autistic. Please keep in mind that the father of ABA therapy, Ivor Lovas, also developed gay conversion therapy. The two use the same operant conditioning principles. So what could we do instead of ABA? Well, we can focus on preventing behavior problems by ensuring that our teachers know about developing appropriate accommodations and implementing them consistently. We can make sure that all students who need augmentative and alternative communication get evaluations and access to AAC in a timely manner. We can make sure that our occupational therapists focus on sensory integration and not just find motor skills used for writing, because sensory integration is also important for school functioning. There are also alternatives to ABA. UNC Chapel Hill's TEACH program, Marion County brought in trainers starting in 2006 on TEACH, and it was very successful there. Am I out of time? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Adriana?
I'm going to get low, hard to hear out there.
If you will give us your full name, please.
Adriana Keen. May I start?
I'm so sorry.
May I start?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
As I was reviewing tonight's agenda, I looked at the master in service plan. I repeatedly saw large or small groups listed under the description of activities for teachers to use. It's on page 107 and in multiple places. My question for the board is how is this going to be possible if we're not even allowing our children to play outside together? According to the Elachua County Public School Fall 2021 COVID Response Plan on page five, it clearly states, and I quote, "At the elementary level, develop and keep students and staff in a steady cohort group that stays together as much as possible throughout the day and from day to day. Limit mixing between cohort groups as much as possible during lunch, bathroom breaks, arrival and dismissal, free periods, recess, unless to meet students' educational needs." End quote. So yesterday, the Senior Vice President of Health Affairs at University of Florida stated, "I don't think we can draw a connection that there was an uptick because of the game. I think we are probably able, probably able to say with confidence that we didn't see an impact at all." So why is it safe to have 90-plus fans shoulder to shoulder for four hours, but it's not safe for approximately 120 students, which would be an average elementary grade, to play for 30 minutes outside? My son came home today and said, mommy, it's so-and-so's birthday, and I couldn't even say happy birthday to him outside. That is the one time these children can be them and do them, and they're not being allowed to do that. Let's switch gears. Let's go back into the large or small groups, but inside. Let's imagine reading groups, science experiments, et cetera, group activities. Everyone keeps telling us that there is no data on unmasking children in school. So after this afternoon, I decided to stop listening to other people and do some research for myself. I decided to call several preschools in Elachua County. I was able to reach six this afternoon. All these preschool teachers, these schools teach children four and under. This is what I found. Not one preschool that I got in contact with has had anybody from the county call them and see with what has been going on with them. They have been unmasked, they have been opened through the COVID, through the Delta variant. Why aren't we not contacting our local citizens, our local preschools, and seeing how the spread is there? Two, all the schools were mask optional, and all but one required their four-year-olds to wear a mask. Out of five out of six preschools I talked to, only a handful were masking, and the average student was about 100. Some were 50, 60, some were 120, so I just gave it a ballpark. One out of the class, one preschool had one class that had 15 students and eight of them masked, and they masked regularly. We said, you know, not going to go there. Five out of the six schools said that they saw no spread child to child, mostly cohabitation. And there was one school out of the six that said they saw a slight increase in one class in late July, August, early August. So based upon this information, how are we going to give our teachers the ability to teach in groups when we're not comfortable doing this? We need to have a discussion, and that, I understand that Dr. Simon is saying this plan has been there for, since 2017, I think she said, but we're not in 2017 anymore. There has been a lot of change. There has been technology, there's Canvas, there's a lot of things going on, and that's pretty much all I had to say, so thank you. So I guess I would say vote no until further.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Jay Maggio. Yes. Say your full name, please.
Sure. My name is James, nicknamed Jay Maggio.
Thank you.
And I'm only going to hopefully use about a minute or so because I'm going to speak later on, but I wanted to address the CRT comments. I have a PhD in political theory. I also have a law degree, and I challenge anybody here who spoke about CRT to ask you, do you know one single thing about it? Can you tell me an author in CRT who influenced CRT? What does it do? Like, I feel like the people who hear about it heard a blurb on Fox News about it, and that's it. CRT is, for 30 years, a way of looking at the world that isn't exclusive, it's looking at a lens about the way the world works. It's not dissimilar, and I don't know if you, people, if people went to college and studied stuff like this, but if you studied film, there's, there's the female gaze, which looks at horror films, for example, and how they destroy women's bodies all the time. They're always the victims. They're always the victims. CRT is nothing but that. And the notion that it's somehow victimizing black people and/or victimizing white people, it is an analytical tool in school to look at the world a different way. And I would hope, as a pluralistic society, we would wanna look at the world in as many different ways as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other discussion at this time for this item. May we move for the vote? No, sir. May we, Attorney Delaney?
If we've had a motion to table the vote, we need to see if there's a second, and then we need to hold a vote on that.
I second it.
I'd like to table it to the next meeting. I just don't know enough. I learn more than I can, I know, at all. And I don't, if I did, if it's the same, I'll find out, and I need to learn this. But I'm not gonna tell you I know all this, and I'm voting on something I don't know. So that's why I think we should table it. That's my reason. Okay, good. Vote? On table?
It has been properly moved and, well, seconded by Mrs. Russell, that we would table this item for another meeting.
You have to table specific. It's gotta be a meeting specific.
Mrs. Surtin?
I don't have a question. I don't have a question if it's the next meeting is what Dr. Paulson is suggesting. I don't have a question. It's on. You turned it on. You turned it on.
I don't see the red light. At this point, we can move for tabling?
No, we have to vote, Dr. McNeely.
Well, I thought when Mrs. Russell made the second, that we would go on and, and move it.
Gotta vote.
All right, well, let's do, let's do the vote, starting with Mrs. Surtin coming down the dais.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. No. Motion fails. Thank you so much.
Now we go back to the original motion.
All right, now can we go back to the motion?
I, I move that we go ahead and approve this tonight, and I vote yes on that.
Okay. We have a motion. Would you second it again?
It's been moved and seconded, and we just need a vote on action item two.
Madam Chair, I did, did have a question, if I could.
Go ahead.
And this might be from Ms. Rolle, or it might be for the superintendent. I'm, I'm just curious as if, if we found anything, and like, and like Dr. Paulson said, you know, this is something that's been going on for years, and, and that there hasn't, we haven't found a problem, but maybe we saw something that, that we were concerned about. This would be, I, I think, we could always change if we find something specific we'd like to change. Would that be, because I, I didn't find any problem with it at all, but I, I just, if, is that something we, we would be able to propose for another time?
Yes, Mr. Hyatt, you are able to, we are able to go back. We can revisit it. Actually, it's up for annual review. We do this every year, so yes, we can, and go back and look at it and change and revise the, the master in-service plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rolle. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Rolle.
Can I ask a question? I'm not asking to get anything done.
At this point, we are going to do what Mrs. Rolle suggested. She says it's a review each year, and so we are at that point. We'll handle it in that manner. And can we have a vote now, please?
I gotta say no, because I know the one I'm voting on.
Okay, Mr. Hyatt?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much. We have to go now back. We have quite a few citizens. We have some who have been waiting for a long time on the phone, and so we will start with the caller, Lisa Green. Ms. Green, state what you're going to speak about. If it's falling within our Civility Act, we will not allow you to continue to speak.
We are waiting on the caller to be sent over. One moment. Caller is live.
Mrs. Green?
I see that. Remember, you're on TV. You're being seen. We're not stupid. But here's, here's the main thing I wanted to call in tonight. I have two sons. Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear. We can hear you, Mrs.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mrs. Green.
Thank you. I have two sons. They're gonna be Haltz and Fort Clark. The main thing I wanna express tonight and what my son has said, because once again, I was cooking dinner, on hold, trying to talk to y'all. My son looked at me, he's like, "Mom, why do you even bother? Why do you even try? They don't care about me." He said, "I'm a white kid from a middle-class family, and we live on the West Side." He said, "I work hard. You and Dad put time and effort in helping us with our school, reading, knowing our teachers, knowing our work. If we need extra help, you help us." He said, "This school board and the new superintendent," he's like, "They don't care about me, Mom. They don't care about us. I'm a throwaway kid." Let that sink in. As educators and people who say you are for all the children, the children are hearing this. They're hearing who you focus on. They're hearing the schools that you care about, and I know they're saying, "Oh, well, if that house ain't on fire, we don't care. We're gonna focus on the houses on fire." How do you think the other houses will burn? Does that make you proud as educators? Does that make you proud knowing that there are students in your district that know that you don't care about them? That you have teachers that you don't care about them? You're not listening to them? You have bus drivers you're not listening to? You're willing to pay bus drivers brand-new, more money than you're willing to pay our long-term driver? Where would this district be if every bus driver called in sick tomorrow? If all your teachers said, "You know what? For once, we're gonna walk out." Everybody else walks out? Everybody else protest? What if we did that? But that's not how they were raised, and maybe that's why they're successful. So I hope each of you sit there and think, and I know you won't. I know two of you, you couldn't care less. Others, I have hope for. You have the majority to do the right thing. We talk about civility? Let's go back to last May, last June. Where was the civility then? You have the numbers. Show the kids, show all of the kids.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Green.
Even the white little class kids that they matter.
Booth Person, thank you so much. Jay Demagio.
Yeah, cut me off.
Jay, you're up. What they cut up, cut her off?
Hi, I'm Jay, I'm Jay Maggio, and in disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Alachua County Democratic Party. As I mentioned before, I'm a professor and have a law degree, and I wanted to talk about the mask mandate from a less emotional point of view. I want people to, who are against the mask mandate, to think of themselves in a leadership position. Governor, Senator, President. And somebody who's a statistician comes up to you and says, "If we mask mandate, we'll lose 100,000 people this year, but if we don't, we'll use a mil, lose a million." And maybe they actually think it violates the rights of the people they mask mandate. But would there be any question in, in that leader's mind that the right thing to do is to save the greatest number of people? And I think that's what's going on. We all, apparently, and not all, a lot of us can't understand that there's a difference between what helps us as an individual and what helps us as a society. My grandfather fought in World War II, and he fought in the invasion of Normandy, which is an incredible story in and of itself. So I don't know if it was FDR or Truman, but, you know, they send those guys into Normandy thinking they would all die. That's a liberty way more than a mass mandate. And they all went. And if you add up the number of Americans that were lost in the World War II, the Korean War, Vietnam War, the First Gulf War, the Second War with Iraq, and Afghanistan, it's less than 600,000, and we are at about a 700,000 loss from masks. And at that moment in World War II, where we lost less people in five years than we've lost so far one, the United States government took the liberty of literally drafting somebody, putting them on a ship, and left, let them go fight. That ultimate liberty they took, which makes me seem like, okay, that's terrible, but it was needed, right? Well, COVID's a war. We're losing more people than we did in those wars, and all we're asking people to do is put something on their face. Of course, there should be outs for, for either anxiety or for illnesses, but they're just asking somebody to put something on their face. The schools already tell us to put something on our feet. We can't, I'm out? Okay, yeah. They tell us to put something as, as shirts. If they can mandate that we wear feet, feet of shoes, shirts, they can mandate masks.
Thank you so much. Dusty Bailey?
That is Dusty Bailey. Esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Simon, greetings. One of the things that I would like to ask, as, as you mentioned, abiding by the civility pledge, that we would be respectful of one another, even when we disagree, and there would not be any personal attack. The gentleman mentioned something about his grandfather serving in World War II. I appreciate his service, as did my grandfather, and I'm sure many individuals in here whose fathers, grandfathers, mothers, or grandmothers that had also served. However, they were fighting for freedom. And other individuals' fear does not take away our freedoms. Your individual fear does not take away society's freedoms. Regarding health and the greater good, there are many other illnesses. There are many other conditions that are preventable, heart disease, obesity, that leads to death. And there's not a huge push, there's no mandates, for individuals to take better care of their health. My question to the board this evening is, with the trajectory of mandates and government overreach, school board overreach, is there any plans for there to be a vaccine mandate for students? And if that is the case, the students or the parents who choose not to be vaccinated, how will they be treated? You do have an opportunity. I, I relinquish the rest of my time to give you an opportunity to answer that question. I'll be happy to repeat it if I need to repeat the question. Do I need to repeat the question?
I think we heard you, and we appreciate your comments.
Okay, would you mind answer individually?
No, sir, not tonight. Thank you so much.
So what you're saying is that you cannot?
Not what I'm saying, is that we're not prepared to answer that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Apaya?
I'm just waiting for the sheets to be passed out. These are my sheets that I've printed out for the board. Should be two sheets. Is it two sheets given to each of them?
If you will state your entire name, thank you.
Yes, no problem. Good evening, the school board, if you don't know by now. My name is Tauria P., and I'm a candidate for District 21, representing Western Alachua, Gilchrist, and Dixie Counties. I'm also the president of Alliance for Responsible Government. The citizens of Alachua County amassed over 2,000 signatures demonstrating absolutely zero confidence in Dr. Simon. We ask that this board terminate her for disastrous policies, along with not even answering emails from parents like myself. UFSC's health CEO Jimenez even reported there wasn't an uptick of COVID cases after the Gator football game where countless people were in attendance, many maskless, much closer than six feet of each other. This is a supposed super-spreader event, but yet no uptick in cases somehow. Yet our children are being muzzled to what end? Is it for their supposed protection? According to the CDC, there has been a total of 516 pediatric deaths from January 2020 September, to now September, September 11th, which is about 18 months. The leading causes of death, according to the CDC as well, for our pediatrics are accidents, usually drowning, congenital malformations, cancer, and suicide. Do you know what one of the leading causes for cancer is? Obesity. Obesity. These facts, they took all the five minutes to look up, but instead, this board has shown me as a parent of two children in the Alachua County public schools, that you either, one, don't even care to look it up, two, it has to be about partisan politics, three, you are that paralyzed by fear, you want it to spread, to spread it to everyone else, and that's a shame. In a new study done by Preventing Chronic Disease, which you have on your desk in front of you right now, published on July 1st, 2021, analyzing 5 million COVID-19 patients, you won't believe this, your risk of dying from COVID increases by 30% if you're obese. But that's not the kicker. Your risk of dying increases by 28% if you have any anxiety and fear-related disorders. Now, what are we to make of all this information? All right? Number one, terminate Dr. Simon. She's more focused on politics than our children. Number two?
Just a minute. I asked you earlier to refrain. Please have a seat.
Refrain from what?
Please have a seat.
I'm not done, ma'am. Number two, we could save countless lives by pushing for a school.
Deputy, escort him out. Chief Hamilton, help escort him to the door. Thank you so much, sir. Dr. Kaplan? Dr. Kaplan?
Good evening. My name is David Kaplan. Thanks. Probably a little bit less exciting than the testimony you just heard. My name is David Kaplan. I'm the father of two students in Alachua County. And good evening, Dr. McNeely, Dr. Simon, and members of the board. You and the assembled citizens here have covered a lot of ground today, and I'm here tonight again to offer you my thanks and support on behalf of so many in the community who are proud of your leadership and commitment to student health, safety, and equity. With any luck, we're on the down slope of the Delta Peak. So tonight, I want to talk specifically about the masking policy and ask three questions. The first question, which I'm sure everyone is interested in, is how is the current masking policy working out for us here in Alachua County? So you know, they say, "A picture is worth 1,000 words," and for a scientist, there's no more exciting picture than a colorful graph. So I got a graph for each of you up there. I think I might be one short. All right? And this is a graph that shows a percentage of public school students in Alachua and surrounding counties who have tested positive for COVID since the beginning of the school year. Here in Alachua County, we've had just over 1,000 positive cases, which translates to about 3.5% of our enrolled students. That's the orange bar in this graph. South of us in Marion County, where there is a mask mandate but with parental opt-out, the positive case rate is about 5.6%. That's the blue bar in this graph. Both those bars are more than double our county's rate of 3.5%. And if our students positivity rate was like these counties, we'd have more than 1,000 additional cases in our schools. As we know, across counties or anywhere, these positive cases lead to quarantines and students out of school while they wait to test negative. So a reduction in cases means more students in school more of the time. Unfortunately, that's all the data I could find from around our region because most counties don't do as good a job as we do in tracking data. So thank you, Mr. Calls, for your excellent work in the COVID Task Force. So ask yourself, look at this very, I made it today with data available online, just like Mr., just like others can look up data and information online, and ask yourself, is the mask policy working? And the answer is yes. Your policy has likely prevented many hundreds or 1,000 or so cases. Your competence and resolve have helped protect the community's health and improved educational outcomes by keeping more students in school more of the time. So thank you for that. So when the doubters come and say, "Is it working?", just compare it to other counties that have taken other tacks. We have less than half the case rate of places that do not have a mask mandate. That was question one. The second question is, as we approach the end of the eight weeks, can we think of a quantitative metric for deciding if and when we're going to update the mask policy? Having a set metric will reduce confusion and help everyone know what to expect. For an example, you can make the mask policy optional, which I know a lot of folks would like, when case positivity is under 5% and the case rate is 5 or 10 per 100K. The third question is, what more can the district be doing to support teachers and principals in the very challenging job of enforcing this policy? So I don't know the answer to that question, but I think a first step would just be stay loud and clear to all your administrators. We have your back. We support you in your efforts to enforce the policy while it's in place, and we will update it when we have more information. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Kaplan.
Dr. McNeely, call a citizen if we have any more sheets. Do we have any more sheets?
You have callers on?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. We'll move with the next citizen, Shay Jennings.
Good evening. So I'm here today.
Would you give your full name, please?
You just said it, Shay Jennings. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of many, many upset parents in our county that feel like we're not being heard. We've come here month after month, and we've spoken to you, and you continue to ignore us. You sit and you look at your phones, and it's almost, it just feels like almost you just don't care. I heard another caller say my exact sentiments earlier today. I know that many of us are really feeling that, that you really don't care and that you're not listening to us. I think it's quite ridiculous that we're continuing to mask our children. There's just a lot of science now that shows that these masks do not work. There's several studies. I've read many of them. Every time you touch your mask, you contaminate it. I'm watching this, I can't say names, but right now, touching her mask right in front of me. Every time you touch her mask, you are contaminating it. Our children are not, they're not being trained on how to wear these masks, but yet we're expecting them to wear their mask properly and to not touch it all day. And they're going around, and there was actually a study here locally, I believe at UF. One of the parents sent a mask in and had it tested for whatever was on the front of it and the inside, I believe. They found a lot of different bacteria and viruses on the masks. So basically, they're just catching germs. And then you're breathing that into your body, which is not good for you. A much better approach to preventing COVID or having less symptoms is maybe to take some vitamin D, eat a healthy diet, exercise, make sure that you're taking care of your bodies. If you are mandating those things, I might have a little bit more respect for you. But we're mandating a, basically a petri dish of germs to stay on our faces, in our children's faces, for several hours a day. Beside from the germs, we're also breathing in carbon dioxide. You're breathing in carbon dioxide, which is actually bad for your own immune system. So in excess of carbon dioxide in the body, it's called hypercapnia. It can cause all different, it can make it hard to focus. It can make you, you can even faint. It can give you headaches. There's a lot of different things that we're not considering with these masks. There are risks involved, and we should be able to make that choice for our children. I feel like we're being treated like two-year-olds that we don't know, we don't know how to make decisions for our children, and we need to, we need to be able to make those choices for our kids. That's all I'll say. Thank you. Have a great night.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
We do have someone on the phone.
All right. Let's hear the citizen on the phone.
Hello?
Hi, citizen, you are on with the board.
Chair McNeely, this is Armando Grundy Gomez. One thing, I guess, I just want to start with Chair McNeely. First of all, your phone systems are broke from the floor up. You might want to get that fixed and figured out. Number two, Chair McNeely, I guess we're talking about how we enforce rules. I remember a couple short months ago, you and some others and some on the boards took exception when people were not being civil. And I remember then the vice chair asking me to leave when I was not being civil. But you all don't have that same level of energy. So I'm looking at you, Chair McNeely, and you, vice chair, and wondering why you all don't have the same energy that y'all look at me. I guess if I was a Caucasian female, I would be considered passionate and not angry, but that's not the case. So whatever. But, and to the fellow that was talking about folks serving in the military, my family served in every single war since the Revolutionary War, and I've also served. So please spare me the patriotism routine and feigning of patriotism. Please spare me. The thing about it is, I guess what my real angst is, I really wish the superintendent would really start speaking truth to power, as all of you. The CRT is not taught in the school. The folks come from probably the same gene pool, can't even define CRT and know what that is. It's not being taught in Alachua County schools. It's not. And then a lot of them, like Jay Magio said, don't even know what it is. So, don't know what the problem is there? Maybe they're talking about communist Caucasian race theory, or they're teaching Schofield Bible to their children? I don't know. But we need to do better. So I appreciate all of you. I appreciate Mr. Hyatt as well for pushing through the plan that has been voted on. At least he read his backup like most of you all did. Kudos. You should be reading your backup all the time instead of having to table. It's been read since 2017. So Dr. Simon, start pushing back and stop sitting there and being a bully, you know, being a punching bag. You're not a punching bag. Push back. Thanks. Bye.
Next caller. I'm sorry.
Hello?
Hello? You have three minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Calista Barsha, and I wanted to say how proud I am of everybody on the board. I think y'all are doing an amazing job. So I just wanted to let y'all know that. I also wanted to make a few things. The kids can go outside. My kids, they go outside all the time. They go outside by the classes. So like, one class goes out, then they go in, and then, you know, they go sectioned to try and prevent the spread of COVID. Because I know somebody had mentioned that. And also, you're not breathing in carbon dioxide. And I do want to apologize for the people that were speaking to y'all like nicely, because y'all don't deserve that. So I just wanted to apologize to y'all about that because y'all are wonderful people, and y'all work so hard that y'all just don't deserve it. So I wanted to let y'all know how thankful I am and how proud of y'all I am, and I wanted to apologize for how not nice people were of y'all. So I hope y'all have a great night and keep up the great work.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
Caller is live.
Caller, you have three minutes with the board. Mr. Stanley. While we're waiting for that caller, while we're waiting for that caller, Shannon Rich, you're up.
I'm a palliative care physician and a PhD in epidemiology. I understand that most people don't have the experiences that I do, but I have literally met with dozens, if not hundreds, of people who have died of COVID. I've spoken to their families and learned about their lives and their love. For most people, discussion of COVID is abstract and the deaths are just numbers. But I know stories. I've met the real people, and there's nothing quite as heartbreaking as seeing someone orphaned, someone widowed for something preventable. I know that many people don't know the science, and I don't expect them to learn statistics or get a PhD. For people concerned that the mask may be harmful, I will just tell you that everyone who is in a surgery OR has to wear a mask, and they wear it for up to 12 hours at a time. If we're willing to trust our surgeons to perform delicate invasive surgeries, I think we can trust that you can breathe well enough to last the time in the classroom. I have been brokenhearted to see how many people prioritize their own and their children's comfort over the lives of others. I know that people talk about it as though sitting through an eight-hour day with a mask is an extreme hardship, but I assure you, it does not compare to a 12-hour ICU nursing shift wearing full protective gear with two or even four patients intubated and dying of COVID. I know personally, at the hospital I serve in, there have been at least one death per day for weeks. That is not normal for the ICU, and it's really causing difficulty for the nurses emotionally. Those women and men continue to be heroes, and anything we can do to make their lives easier, including mask and vaccination requirements, is the minimum we should do to be good Americans. I wish that getting through this pandemic did not require courage or sacrifice, but it does, and I applaud you all as a school board and Superintendent Simon for doing your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley? Are we ready? Citizen, you are on with the board.
Hi there. My name is Erica Eisenhopper, and I'm calling to voice my support in the firing of Dr. Carly Simon and the lack of leadership she's provided.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? You're next.
Thank you. I'm going to try to deal with two ideas in this, what is it, three minutes? First, when we think of a law, we usually think of something that has gone through two deliberative bodies and on to an executive to sign. The hundreds of representatives representing hundreds of thousands of other people have deliberated and arrived at. Unfortunately, a gubernatorial order, an executive order, is technically a law, but is the product of one personality. And therefore, of course, it bears whatever defects that personality happens to have. You might think of them as, you might think of an executive order as an edict. It was interesting that our governor used that, that word referring to the president. Or a decree. Decree, we usually think of coming from a royal personage, a ruler. Or a dictate. And you can decide what you think a dick, who you think a dictator, a dictate comes from. So the governor has made an order about masking that reflects his personality and his personal needs. The other topic is about critical race theory. Critical race theory, first of all, is taught in graduate schools, but it is about analyzing full and complete history. What is the fear that some people seem to have of full and complete history? Abraham Lincoln said, "History is not history unless it is the truth." John Hope Franklin said, "The future started yesterday." So history is very important. And we already know that our system has a little bit of a problem with full and complete history. For instance, the attempted rollout of African-American history in the school year that was interrupted by COVID skipped over a 774-year period of African colonizers, and I will stipulate to that, they were colonizers, who came up into the Iberian Peninsula, running all of Portugal and almost all of Spain for almost 800 years, bringing into use, bringing into there the use of linen as underwear, building the first university in Europe. Columbus would not have known about ocean sailing without them. So we do have to face up to our problems with giving the full, true history. All humans make history. Only humans make history. So when somebody's history is cut short, their humanity is being truncated. Thank you.
Shawna Quirk.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Quirk. I am a parent of four Alachua County.
I am a parent of four Alachua County School District children, and I am a teacher at an Alachua County school. I would like to begin by offering the board and the superintendent, past and present, my apologies, I have sent some strongly worded emails in the past when things have happened that I didn't agree with. Having been paying attention to what goes on in these meetings over the last couple of years, you did not need more. So my apologies for that. What I would like to do is talk about the fact that masks haven't really seemed to have made any kind of meaningful impact in my class and the ability to build a classroom community. I teach fourth grade this year, and the students in my class care about each other. I was surprised by how strongly they care about each other when we did a little event in my classroom, and they, without any prompting, spontaneously broke out into applause and cheering for every single classmate without prompting on my part. That showed me that they really have learned who they are as a person and that they have become a team and, and they care about each other. I also wanted to let you know that as somebody in the classroom with what, I, I'm a Army brat, I was in the Army, my whole family is military, so what we call boots on the ground. I have not had any issues in my class with masks. The only people that I hear complaining about masks are the adults. And usually when I hear children complaining about masks, there is some substantial prompting from their adults. Now, my daughters have both spoken in front of the board, and it's been their words. I've watched board meetings, and I remember one time a child had a poster, and I think Dr. McNeely said, "Why did you make this poster?" And the child goes, "I don't know." To me, that was kind of telling. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I think it is extremely disingenuous of people to assert that all we need in lieu of a mask mandate is better ventilation and smaller class sizes, as if that is something that we could turn on a dime. I think everybody in this room and everybody watching and everybody listening knows, it's not possible in any kind of speedy manner. We're not able to implement that in a way that would be helpful with what we're dealing with now. So I just wanted to say that and let you know that for my one little classroom, we're doing great.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Burdette?
May I speak about what I was wanting to speak about?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
May I speak now about what I was wanting to speak about, or do I need to?
As long as it's not pertaining to, uh, the position of the superintendent, you may.
Then I will sit down, and I will wait until the general comment period, and I will speak at that time.
Just, let's hear from the attorney. As long as it's not about the superintendent's position, I will allow the comment to come.
My understanding is the law does not allow you to do that?
We'll take a break. Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Stanley, would you ask the callers to, um, be patient? Well, she asked me, the superintendent asked me. We have any callers waiting? All right, we'll end the calls at this point, and we'll now reconvene. Mr. Burdette? We have no callers. We've already cleared. No callers. Mr. Burdette, you're up. Mr. Burdette, you may come to the dais and speak for your three minutes.
Hi, my name is James Burdette, and I would just like to say to the previous speaker, that girl was my daughter, and she would yell at you for criticizing her, for holding up that sign. She was nervous that night. How dare you? Now on to what we're here for. Thank you. It's time to discuss replacing our superintendent and conducting a national search for a replacement who is qualified. Superintendent's obfuscation aside, it doesn't matter whether or not the law says, the reality is she's in breach of contract. That's the only thing that matters, contract law. She has created a culture of hostility to any teachers and faculty to oppose her. I'm glad there are teachers who show up, but the reality is the only teachers who feel like they can address this board and not be fired are ones that support her position. If they come and they say, and they're afraid that if they come and speak to this board about what they really believe in opposition, that they will be transferred, they'll be fired. And that culture is negative, and that is one of the reasons why she should be terminated. It is also unjust what happened with the last superintendent. You had an associate professor that came to some board meetings as an activist, and this translated into a cushy job where she could put her activism to practice. Her hiring was pre-planned and rushed. There was no real community input. There was no national search for a replacement of the older superintendent that apparently would have cost too much money. Now you have an activist who is using her position to fight political battles, not run a school district. She uses the school board, the school district, and the children as pawns in her political games. She is not, and now and has not been qualified to be superintendent, and you can remove her. She has used her position to turn the school board into a lawless body. She has ignored the rule of law and created a rogue school district. Her interpretations of statutes and rules are currently losing. Other districts and plaintiffs are losing in the courts as well. And this is all a stalling game, all to win political points. Alachua School Board will lose in the end, whether it's at the trial level or the appellate level or the Supreme Court. You'll lose eventually. It's a given. And you'll have to do what the Department of Education and Department of Health have told you you need to do. While there is cause to remove her, you do not need cause to remove her. We, the citizens of Alachua County, have amassed over 2,700 signatures demonstrating opposition and no confidence in the superintendent.
We will move now to board member request.
Dr. McNeely?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have a request, but I do have a couple of comments.
Please go forth.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank our staff who's here, and they bring the, um, agenda items to us, and thank the citizens who called and, and who were present. Um, we don't always agree. I, I know that very well. I sat in that auditorium before I sat up here on this dais. But there are a couple of things that really, um, that I would like to say, Dr. McNeely. We have an appointed superintendent, and I think all of us, we do know that. And there's some citizens, as I said, I sat there and I sit here now, that are not, they voiced what they don't like. But I do want to remind or just bring to light that our superintendent works at, and she's implementing the will of the board. And on August the 3rd, when we met prior to school starting, we voted unanimously, four of us, that we would start the school year with a mask mandate. And I know that was not popular, but that's what we voted, the four of us. On the 17th, we came back, and again, we voted, um, to extend the mask mandate. That was my colleague, Dr., uh, Mr. Hyatt, that made that motion to extend the mandate for an additional eight weeks, and we had medical staff and epidemiologists and all to come, and they gave, advised us to do that. And we voted to do that. Dr. Simon is, is doing the will of the board. She's not being an activist. She did the will of the board. She's an appointed superintendent. On, um, also on the, I think it was September 7th, if I got my dates correct, the board, the majority voted four to one to authorize Dr. Simon to proceed ahead and to join the litigation with the other districts. And she did that at the will of the majority of the board. And that's how the board was operated since I was a citizen and now, so. And as part of that, we, as a collective, gave Dr. Simon the authority to work with the attorneys. We approved that agenda item, um, to proceed forward with a strategy, um, a legal strategy that was not discussed with us. You know, as our other legal things that we've been into, that they don't come and they don't, we don't discuss that here from the dais. But we gave her, uh, the authority to negotiate, or I don't know if that's the correct word to say for, but to work with the, um, under the advisement of our staff attorney, Ms. Francine Turner, and our board attorney, Mr. Delaney, and then the firm that we're with, I can't recall the name of it, I signed the form.
RGMO.
Okay, so we, but she's working at the, I'm, I'm saying this and doing this because our superintendent is not an elected superintendent. Alachua County has an appointed superintendent, and she is, was appointed by a majority of the board. And so as part of the strategy in that she's, that she has done, she, and along with legal stats, um, advisement, has said that, um, we have, we're in, feel we're in compliance with the rule that is in place, and that we have no information to report to the Department of Education. That, that is what her, we, we, we voted, and we gave her that authority to do that and to be, work with the legal staff to do that. So that is why earlier I didn't vote to modify the, the, the minutes, because that's not what we voted upon, the majority of us. We had one member saying that she should give a report, but that, a report of what's happening or not happening, or what we're doing to students. We didn't, we didn't vote that as a collective. That was one member's request. But as a collective, we voted to allow the superintendent, we voted four to one, to allow her to proceed with legal actions. And as part of that, she says that we've, and her and the legal staff feel that we are in compliance, so, so there is nothing to, to report. If we report something that says that we're undermining our legal strategy and our, and our premise of where we're going forward. So I just really wanted to bring that out, and, and for, um, our citizens to, to, um, raise it and to say that she's an activist superintendent. The superintendent is carrying out the will of the board, the majority of the board. And while we may not always agree with that as board members or as citizens of the community, that is just, that is how this board is operating and the superintendent. I, I will say that. I just, she's going at the will of the board. And I know the previous superintendents, they, they enacted things that I didn't, I, as a citizen, did not agree with, but they did them as the will of the board, the majority of the board. They voted, and the superintendent had to do that. That was part of her contract. So I just want to, and thank you, Dr. McNeely, for allowing me the time to say that. I don't have a request of staff or anything of that nature, but I did want to, those are some notes that I made, and I won't rehash the others that I made, but I think that, that legal part there, and where, um, Dr. Simon is being accused of using her position to be an activist or something of that nature. No, she is using her, she's, and, and doing the things that the board voted for her to do along this strategy. The board, the, the, the board members, we voted to have, to have the mask mandate. And the policy that is being enforced is the same policy that was in effect last school year. There's no new policy. We, we went through the rulemaking process last school year, was that 2020, 2021? We didn't, this, this is not a new policy. We just extended the application of it into this new school year. So I don't think that's completely correct to, to, um, put it on that she's being a tyrant and all the things. things that we're being emailed, and the accusations that are being made in emails and from during the citizen input time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Surgeon. Mrs. Russell?
Yes, I would like to ask a question because this has been brought up. Is, in fact, is Dr. Simon, is she violating her contract by not having current certification? That seems to be the thing that was presented. So is that the case or not?
I haven't studied that particular issue. I'm not aware of any violation, and it's something I would take a look at and then report back if there was a problem.
Thank you. I ask because it's, you know, it's been brought up, and so it's been presented to the public. So I think that is a question that needs to be answered. I'm not, I'm just asking for public information, that's all.
The attorney said he will get with you, Mrs. Russell?
Pardon?
The attorney, Delaney?
Yes.
He would get back.
Yes, I heard. I heard that.
But what I would like for staff to do, certainly, and the news reporter who was here tonight, Dr. Simon, I normally carry your resume every single meeting. For some reason, I took it out tonight, and that was a misnomer for me. But I want the staff, my request from Mrs. Peck and Mrs. Green for the next board meeting, to have the whole, I mean, I know it's out there on the website, but I want hard copies for every single individual who walks in this boardroom, to see the caliber of superintendent that we do have. And there will be no misunderstanding by anyone, even though the attorney is going to address Mrs. Russell. But I think it's past time that everyone, maybe every board meeting, we need to have it, and possibly I will read it before I end my term in November. I would have the pleasure of reading every single item. Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a request, just sort of generally of all of, all of my colleagues here. There are times when we have citizens speaking, and other things are going on, whether there's a side conversation, whether trying to take care of other business, whether looking at your phone. And I think that if I'm back here, and I'm addressing five elected officials, one appointed superintendent, I think that those people need to have the assurance, whether or not we enjoy what they're saying, that we are listening and to what they're presenting. And it's embarrassing to me when other things are happening and we're not doing that. I don't think that happens often, but I think it happens almost every meeting. And so what I would suggest, and again, not demanding, just suggesting, that if something is so urgent that it requires discussion while a citizen is speaking, then we just say, "Could you please hold just a second?" And you let their time start over. And if it's not that urgent, deal with it between speakers. That's a request from me. It's not meant to be a criticism, but I think that we're going to, there was obviously consternation by some citizens here tonight, who, whether or not it's accurate, feel like we're not paying attention. And so I think that would be good for everybody, including me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for your comments. When the speakers are up, whether I'm looking in your face or not, my concentration is trying to hear what you have to say and to discern what you are saying before cutting you off. But I appreciate your comments, Mr. Hyatt. I don't, I don't see, well, I see your phone. Well, I see Dr. Paulson's phone.
Upside down.
I don't see, I don't see phones. No, I don't pay attention to that. My attention is to the time, what the speaker is saying, and what relevance it is. But please know, every comment, whether we agree with you or not, we appreciate you coming to take the time to say what you have to say personally. I personally applaud you for that, as well as our callers that call in. But please know, from here on out, I will listen with more of a discern tone. I just ask the gentleman who worked the booth to make sure that the speakers are speaking directly into the mic, because I tell you, many of you I could not understand. And so unless I go back now and relook at the video on tomorrow, some of you are so quiet tone, and I couldn't hear you. But not that I'm not listening and appreciate that you're here to say what you need to say to this board. I would ask that maybe from here on out, our phones are placed down in our briefcases, and that we won't have them on the dais, if that has been a problem for any citizen. I hope not. We do need emergency folk for the superintendent, and if she has a method, we'll talk about it. But other than that, Mr. Hyatt, I appreciate your comments, and we will certainly try to act accordingly, and not, not paying attention to the people who are here to share with us.
And Madam Chair, I wasn't pointing out any one person. I'm just saying it's something we can all be aware of. Thank you.
Any other comments? It is late. For those of you who were not with us earlier, we were asked to come before 5:00 today. We were here, and so I'm ready to head east. I don't know about the rest of you. Seeing none, seeing no comments from the superintendent, we love you, Dr. Simon. Okay? This meeting is adjourned.